Twenty-five regular meeting of the Mill Creek City Council to order at six P M. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would Councilmember Paddock please lead us?
By the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Leah, roll call, please.
Mayor Holt's call.
Here.
Mayor Portem Binyel?
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari? Councilmember Steckler?
Here.
Councilmember Allison?
Here.
Councilmember Duque?
Here.
Councilmember Paddock?
Present.
Councilmember Cavallari informed me he began his vacation today early and will not be able to be here tonight. So can we have a motion to excuse?
Motion to excuse. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. If there's no objection before we get to audience communication, I'd like to modify the agenda to move the study session up after our proclamations. Okay? Okay. Audience communication, anyone in chambers like to address councils tonight? Seeing a knot of heads negative, and I do not see anyone online, so we will have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Brings us to our presentations, our first of two proclamations. This one is in honor of our police department. Okay. Proclamation of the city Mill Creek, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls is Police Week. And whereas Police Week was established by a joint resolution of Congress in nineteen sixty-two and pays special recognition to those in America's law enforcement community. And whereas there are more than nine hundred thousand law enforcement peace officers serving in communities across the United States and twenty-three commissioned members of the Mill Creek Police Department, who play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the city of Mill Creek. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the challenges, duties, and responsibilities of their police department. And whereas the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas since seventeen eighty-six, over twenty-four thousand peace officers have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. And whereas May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U S flags should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, I Brian Holt's call, the mayor of the city of Mill Creek, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, as Peace Officers Memorial Day and May eleventh, twenty twenty-five through May seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, as National Police Week in the city of Mill Creek, and encourage the members of our community to join in honoring our law enforcement officers and take a moment to remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. Sign this thirteenth day of May, two thousand twenty-five. I assume we want to do a photo op before we move to our next one.
Also, a thank you to the officers, especially those in attendance today.
Martin, do you want a photo? What's the best way to do it? Have them in front of us or all come down? Okay. I almost reread the police script. Okay, from police department to public works. A proclamation of the city of Mill Creek, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Mill Creek. And whereas the city's infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and a resilient maintenance crew, who are all responsible for rebuilding, improving, and the proactive maintenance of our city's transportation, public buildings, parks, and facilities, and other structures which are all essential for our community members. And whereas the public works maintenance crew works diligently above and beyond regular work hours to care for the city on nights, weekends, and during emergencies. And whereas this year's theme for the National Public Works Week is People, Purpose, Presence, highlighting three cornerstone ideals that motivate public works employees to serve in their communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty-five marks the sixty-fifth Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I Brian Holt's call, the mayor of the city of Mill Creek, on behalf of the city council, to hereby proclaim May eighteenth, twenty twenty-five through May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, as National Public Works Week in the city of Mill Creek. Sign this thirteenth day of May, twenty twenty-five. And I think we need to do it with all our public works people, Mike. Okay, so we are going to move up the first study session, item ten G, the public works maintenance and operations facility needs assessment update.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Portem, council, honored guests. I thank you for this second of four opportunities to talk about this program. Tonight, we're going to give you a status update and a progress report. On this current project was to, which is, the purpose is to select a parcel for acquisition. The public works team and makers have worked together to do a needs analysis for current and future operations and maintenance requirements to determine a parcel size and that would fit the required maintenance facilities. Make presenting with me today is Rish Akil, our project manager. He recently became a father this year. He says to help keep his newborn sleeping through the night, he reads him a book on prime numbers. Keeps his undivided attention. And Diego Rodriguez, a planner, who in his spare time is a musician, and is always looking for new folks to play with. He's in a band called Nine Hundred Ninety-Nine Megabytes, but they don't have a gig yet. Welcome, makers. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Good thing he's got a day job.
Good evening, council and mayor. So today's, thank you, Robert, for the introduction. So as you can see, today's presentation, as Robert mentioned, this is the second of four meetings. So today's presentation, we have a short agenda for you to give you an overview of what this project is about. And then I let Diego explain kind of the current conditions of public works facilities. And he wants to share something about best practices of what we see about public works, modern practices in the surrounding area. And then we're going to talk a little bit about how much space you would need as we think about future of Mill Creek's public works. And then we close out today's presentation with a short preview into site selection. As Robert mentioned, the final outcome of this project is hopefully selecting a site that is the future home of Mill Creek Public Works. So give you a preview of what that means and then close out with some next steps. So overview, so you can see from that image in the middle, that's Hanskisch, that Makers was lucky to work on many years ago, the vision for Mill Creek Town Center. I wasn't around, obviously, at that time. But we, as you can see, a lot has changed around you, a lot of development. Mill Creek looks a lot different than it was many years ago. Public Works is located in this building, a lot of the functions are in this building and in this area, which is incompatible for the operations that they do. So which is really the reason why we are looking at this project. You might be familiar with Public Works, but a quick overview of the facilities that you have. Most of the functions are in this building in City Hall. So you have a crew office in the break room, the maintenance shop for the crews. You also, they also use the conference room that are, that is next door. You have some functions and the warehouse that is in the building next door, but a lot of your fleet and equipment are parked in the surrounding property. That is a little over double of what it was back then. Your crews are still operating off the same facility, so that's the big point you want to make, that your crews are still operating from that same facility, even though your population has doubled or over doubled since that time. What that means is increases the risk for critical tasks. So Keegan and this team, they are very reactive and cannot respond on a preventative maintenance cycle, which is something that they would like to do. We also have the graph for, you know, what your comprehensive plan, what the growth is expected for the city of Mill Creek. And the number that shoots up is potential growth with future annexation, what it would look like. So your existing facility is obviously not able to scale to serve any population growth or annexation scenario. That's the main reason why we are looking at this project. Two objectives, so what space do you need? Building and site area to meet that long-term need for Mill Creek Public Works? And then that would be, that is the focus of today's presentation. And then the focus of the future presentation would be to identify the site that is best suited to meet that needs. I hand over to Diego to give you an, oh, before I do that, actually, a quick timeline check. So we are kind of in a four-step process. Today, we are at that star council briefing, as you can see. So we completed current conditions and space needs since we started the project late last year. We're kind of in the middle of the site selection, which is why I want to give councilman an update on where we're at in the process. And then over the next few months, we will be wrapping up the site selection or findings report and then presenting to council in late summer, early fall about the final findings of our study. Now I'll hand over to Diego.
Yeah, so I'm going to talk about some of the existing conditions, mainly the key issues that are driving the need for a new public works facility. So broadly speaking, the maintenance shop is out of capacity. The facility lacks adequate workstations, break rooms, meeting rooms, and more that are required to have effective operations. The limited space forces some tasks that public works could complete themselves to be contracted at great expense for the city. Deliveries are also logistically challenging at City Hall, often requiring traffic control along Main Street and department coordination just to get public works the materials that they need to do their job. Furthermore, the existing site around the maintenance shop is also inadequate to support today's operations. All of your valuable equipment and fleet is left uncovered, exposed to the elements, which increases their maintenance costs and reduces their lifespan. Equipment is also unsecured by any sort of perimeter fence around the site, which leaves it open to potential vandalism from people wandering in off of Main Street or from North Creek Trail, which goes just along the side of the site. And the limited area at City Hall also creates conflicts when different departments are trying to use the same limited space. To solve these issues, the current location is not suitable for expansion. The maintenance shop is constrained by the site available at City Hall. And even if it weren't, to expand public works in this current location would not be compatible or support the South Town Center vision, which would see City Hall and public works by extension as the first stop along Main Street as people come down from the north. The Dobson site has been a great asset, which has allowed public works to continue to operate out of their current facilities for longer than they would have been. But the split operations, driving from one site to another and then back again, adds up, creating a lot of unproductive drive time. Now to look at some best practice comparisons between your facility and other facilities in the region that speak to these key issues, starting with the workstations and the dispatch. So as you can see on the left-hand side in the existing condition images, you have your locker rooms next to your break room, next to your workstation, all of these areas sharing the same small mezzanine in the upper level of the maintenance shop. In our example images from Bonnie Lake on the right, you can see that they have distinct workstations, drop-in workstations for their crew that are separate from a multi-use room that they can use as dispatch in the morning, break rooms during the day, and training rooms when they need them. Additional space for your lockers and drying rooms allow you to create well-ventilated rooms and add small amenities like benches that really improve the quality of life for your staff. To your crew shop and your storage, this actually occupies the space just beneath the mezzanine that I was talking about, which you can see in the roof of the existing image, existing condition images. Adequate space around these work areas improves efficiency for your staff by allowing multiple people to use the shop, but more importantly, increases safety. In this Amish example on the right, you can see that in this shop there is adequate circulation space to navigate between all of the different benches in this work area and plenty of floor space that is clear of any equipment storage that could prove to be a tripping hazard. Distinct inaccessible tool storage is also important to reduce the time and energy spent by your crew finding and organizing equipment day to day. You can see that in the existing condition image, your crew has actually done a phenomenal job of trying to create systems of organization that work well for them. There's just simply not enough space to put everything that they need and certainly not enough space to expand. And lastly, on the yard areas in the existing condition image, you'll see large sweeper trucks and other pieces of equipment, trailers uncovered, trying to be stored in parking spaces that are meant for much more compact vehicles to them. And similarly, the circulation space of the lot is meant for compact vehicles, not large vehicles like your dump trucks and your sweepers. Your crew has to spend extra time to safely maneuver these around the site and pick up and drop off equipment. In our examples from Issaquah and Kirkland, you'll see that they have more maneuvering space, but they also have an economical covered storage solution in the form of overhangs that come off of the side of their buildings, where you can put that fleet parking and that equipment storage in a weather-sensitive environment that, without creating an entirely different coverage structure. And now I will hand it back over to Rish as he goes into the details of the space needs assessment.
So in this section, what we want to investigate is how much space do you need before you start looking for a set? So really, that's the, that's the section all about. So the key assumption when we look at space need is that, you know, public works, that site, that facility for you should work well into the future. So it should work for definitely for the next twenty years, just thinking about the growth. But ideally, that size, you should be there in the long term. Why? Because if there is a potential annexation, you have maximum flexibility with the existing site if it's big enough. One thing key to remember is a public works facility like this would be a generational investment. So it's a key decision for the new Mill Creek. But the good thing is that investment can be phased over many years, so it's not a one-time cost. This one's tricky, so to estimate, you know, how to think about as you're growing and potential annexation, how do you plan for multiple scenarios? So what we try to do in our process in time, trying to understand how much space you would need, is to think about two population scenarios. So first one that you see down there, it's called the current population through the twenty-year projection. So thinking about how much you have today in terms of population and your twenty-year growth. And then the other scenarios is trying to look at a twenty-year population as you make your annexing fifty percent or up to hundred percent of the municipal growth area. So we have two population scenarios that we looked at. We also looked at some peer cities. As Diego mentioned, we not only looked at how they are designed, how they are operating, but we also looked at how they are, what kind of services they're providing, how many staffs they have, how much fleet are they using to provide that service? And then finally, what is the building area? What is the site area that they're occupying today? So we had some conversations with different peer cities and kind of broke them into two categories. So as you can see in the current twenty-year, we have five cities, Arlington, Macleod, Maple Valley, and Kenmore, I should call it. And then in the fifty to hundred percent annexation scenario, we have Edmonds and Marisfield on the lower end, and then Redmond and Kirkland kind of in that higher end of population growth with annexations in there. So this kind of slide and table gives you a comparison, how you compare with your peers as you think about growth and potential annexation in the future. So it obviously talks about your population staff, building area, site area, and the services provided. So you have seven staff, five thousand square feet, and you have a little over acre that public works is using today. You provide streets, service as a service, street maintenance, service water maintenance, parks, facilities maintenance, and maintenance of city facilities. So those are the key kind of buckets of services that you provide as a public works department. Take a look at Kenmore, Maple Valley, Arlington, Macleod. Not getting the numbers, but basically staff building and site area, all of them are triple of what you have. There you have slightly more services in some cases, but you can see there's a slight mismatch in how much the building site area that we have. Thinking about the higher population, obviously, the numbers are higher, but you can see they provide more services like signals, fleet maintenance, and even water and wastewater at that higher level. The reason we, we try to look at peer cities is trying to not look at the numbers, but trying to understand, you know, how they operate, what kind of services they provide. Kind of the bottom line, if you wanted to, you know, describe is apples-to-apples comparison with peer cities is really difficult because the services that they provide are different, how they provided, how they organize their facilities to provide those services would be hard to measure. But the bottom line that we found in our analysis is your staff, you have a lot less stuff. You have a lot less building area and site area that you're operating out of. As you grow, as the city grows, and if you add more services, you would require a different set of skills, notably like asphalt maintenance, signals, for sure. If you have a bigger fleet, you would require maintaining your own fleet and potentially water and wastewater if that becomes, okay? So that is some of the key findings in our research of peer cities. So, so how much space do you need? We estimate you would require about fifteen thousand square feet to meet your twenty-year growth projections. So that is triple of how much space you have today in the building area. An additional twenty thousand square feet are just to cover supplies and parking. It's important to know that those spaces can be covered in a later phase, as budget allows. But definitely, that's something we would recommend. As Diego mentioned, best practice is to cover fleet and supplies just to protect them from the weather and increase their lifespan and reduce your maintenance costs over the years. However, this does not account for annexation, so annexation would require slightly higher building area and site area as well. So how much site you would need, that's kind of the, kind of what Robert started this conversation with. We believe, we estimate that you would need a minimum of three acre, but ideally, to give you maximum flexibility, around five acres. You have a couple of slides in the site selection. Now that we know how much site we, or we kind of understand of the, how much site we're looking at, we started looking at multiple parcels. So we discovered around forty parcels, not just within the city limits, but in your urban growth area that are compatible. We obviously started to filter them based on the size. So these are all parcels that are at least two acres in size and are outside residential zones. The first level of filtering that we looked at is how far are they from a key arterial? So they have to be around a mile away so crews can quickly get on a major arterial or a highway. We looked at ownership and compatibility with the neighboring property. We looked at the egress and egress from the site, so it's viable for crews getting in and out of that site. And then we also looked at evident topography issues. We also did some targeted site visits of many of the sites. And based on that, we filtered them down to these five sites. We also filtered them by sites that are encumbered by redlands. So these are the five sites that are not encumbered by redlands. We also adjusted the minimum area to be three acres, as we mentioned. So the five sites that we have on your screen is, one of them is the city-owned Dobson site. We have two private properties that are within the city limits and two additional properties, as you can see, that are in the urban growth area. So we're still in the middle of this shortlisting site selection progress. So over the next few months, we are looking at the potential for any of these sites to be a good fit for future public works operations and then evaluate the acquisition feasibility of any of those sites. So over the few, next few months, that is what we are, yes. So the next few months, we are evaluating the, these sites and shortlisting, and we will bring forward our recommendation and our final report to council sometime in early fall. Questions?
Thank you. Questions? I'm sure there's going to be a few. Councilmember Steckler?
Thank you. Okay, so I have, I have a few questions. And you already started to address it, with us looking at annexation, does it make sense to move ahead with this or wait until the annexation study is done and we know where we're going to be annexing to, if we're going to annex, to know where would be the most ideal location?
If you, if you are looking at annexation and if you know kind of the higher boundaries, that is why we do the study, thinking about flexibility. So the five acre is what we recommend, so that allows you to place your site anywhere within the urban growth area, knowing that you are, at least in a way, you're thinking about the annexation and that would be covered in that future scenario.
And I assume this is, there's not, when your examples of working with other cities, the off-site is not connected to their, their city hall or, or is it? Is it separated or is it normally connected?
Rarely there are.
Rarely are they connected. They're usually disconnected.
At least the maintenance and operations pool, some of the admin functions might be with the rest of the city departments, the office based staff.
So the admin could stay near the city hall, but the off-site trucks and, yeah, equipment and everything. When you, on the staffing counts, which were pretty shocking, that you had of other cities, like considering mainly admins is the one that comes to my mind, were those F T E counts or total staffing counts? Those are just F T Es? So any part-timers would be in addition to that or seasonal workers, which I know they have. Wow. All right. Also, last question. The sites that you looked at, you were, you were looking at there, were they all undeveloped sites? Or did any have existing structures on them?
Some do have existing structures on them.
So my thought was, would it be most advantageous to, when I see the, the other cities, they almost all had, you know, large carport areas and, you know, warehouse area, inside area. Looking at maybe some of the properties that are, that are up for sale, would that be a more advantageous look for us? What's the difference in cost between developing a raw piece of land versus buying an existing piece that we could just develop to fill our needs?
That is a good question. That is part of our analysis. Yes, we are looking at any properties that would have an existing building. Can it be attributed to make use of the maintenance shop? Then that will obviously reduce some of your costs. So we are looking at a bit of cost estimates as part of those site selection costs.
That would be the, the next step will be, will give us a chance to look at costs of one versus the other. Okay, great. Thank you.
Can you go back to the map of the sites? Wrong button. So one of the questions I can ask while they're pulling up the map, I mean, we've talked for years about the Silver Lake property. Is that too small to not meet the criteria? Silver Lake?
Silver Lake Water District, so it's too small. And they've decided during COVID, they really liked having that separate location. They've kind of taken that off.
Okay.
Taken off the table.
And, and my, if the map comes up, great. But my main question was, first is, the Pacific Topsoil is an existing business. Is this just looking at the sites and not looking at whether or not they're actually available around the market?
Yes, I think that, you know, fundamentally, I think the interesting thing to note on that, they looked within the whole M U G A, thinking we might find a five-acre parcel somewhere else. And the answer was they came down to those five. There are not a lot of other parcels between us and I five or out to the east. There's a couple down, down south, like the Cadman site is an old. There's a couple down this, down south, like the Cadman site is an old materials processing concrete plant that is for sale, but it's under contract for residential, residential development. The two on five twenty seven are ones we kind of are aware of down there. Pacific Topsoil, as you said, it's an operating business, but it doesn't have a lot of construction to it. And then Dobson. That's really kind of the five sites that were in the MUGA and happen to be with, within or close to city limits.
Can, can we clarify the, I'm just the Mill Creek Commons and the Mill Creek Self-Storage, are those the properties south of the new storage facility that was just built?
Yeah, Mill Creek Commons is just south and Mill Creek Storage is the developer that's been working on that, but it's the old Wileywood Nursery site. And it's.
Oh, that's farther south than I thought. Cause I was thinking, so the Mill Creek Commons property, if I'm remembering correctly, that's the one right across from Old Seattle Hill Road that's had a for sale sign up there for as long as I've lived in Mill Creek.
Yep, that's the one.
Okay. So the, is that, that's who they're owned by? Mill Creek Commons owns that big piece? Or is that, is that just an identif, location identifier?
It's abbreviation. Yeah, it's, it's the same gentleman who developed the, who owned and developed the one.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Other questions? Stephanie, Councilmember Paddock? She hadn't, I was just. Stephanie, did you have any questions?
I, I, thank you, Mayor. I didn't actually have a question, but I do have a comment. So I know we were discussing how many workers that they have, how much staff they have in, John specifically brought up Edmonds. And I do want to point out, as we're looking at like how much staff people have, that they are really, really behind on their money right now and don't have any money. So we need to just keep in mind, just because they have a lot of staff, doesn't mean that it's going to stay that way or that they can fund that staff.
Okay, Councilmember Paddock. Is it, is there ever a scenario where a shared workspace, like with a different city, like two cities could come together? To, to have a shared yard or facility? Or is that just crazy thinking?
Interior, it's not crazy thinking, but it's really difficult operationally it's challenging.
Yeah.
And that is, that has come up. That has come up at our regional collaboration meetings, but we're kind of in an island or ways away from the nearest city. It makes it a little bit logistically challenging, even if we could find a site.
And challenging to do it and then challenging also to find a site, right? This sounds, sounds difficult. And this is probably outside of the scope of your work, but I just want to bring it up. I, I think when, as we go through this process, by being able to quantify the cost to the city of not having the right area, not having the right equipment, not having the right staff would be super useful. I think our citizens would want to know those trade offs. And it would be interesting to know, you'd mentioned that there's a lot of stuff that we're not doing. The additional maintenance, the signals, water, wastewater, like who's, who's doing that now? Cause I'm sure someone is doing that. We're paying someone to do that for our city. And having that in that formula or in that analysis, I think would be really, really helpful going, going forward. And then just the last thing, I, I think I, I think I heard you say that not having an adequate public works yard creates a situation where, where we're more reactive than proactive. And maybe you could describe that a little bit, like what that looks like. And then that might also fit into the cost benefit of, of getting, you know, what, what does being proactive give us that reactive is taken away?
I can give you an example, but maybe Keegan can add to that wishes, but an easy example would be.
Can he step closer to the microphone? When he's back that far, I can't really hear. Thank you.
Better?
Yeah.
Step down, step, you do better. It's weird, but.
So an easy example would be a streets maintenance. So typically you would have a map and you would start from like the northeast, you go to east. And you're essentially in a clockwise direction. So you have a map that you're following. But right now, so that would be preventative and you're doing that on a cycle. So you know when you're doing it, so crews come into the morning and they, they know they're going out to that particular area that day. Next week, they know where they're going. Reactive would be essentially you're waiting for a situation to happen. You got a call and you're going to that area. You know, that date. So that, that over time, that increases your cost because you do, it's a haphazard way of, you know, maintaining your entire system. So obviously that's challenging because you don't know where you're going, you know, how much, you know, what you need to plan for. So those are some of the, you know, the issues that you may run into in the future. So knowing how your assets are being maintained, that's so much easier to plan around it.
And it is, that, that sounds to be more of a staffing issue than it is a public facility issue.
It's, it's more like maintaining your assets that you have around the city. It's the same for city facilities because you maintain that today. So if you know, if, if you, if you plan or are planning your maintenance around that for your buildings, then obviously you're in a better shape than, you know, addressing it as things break.
Thank you. Good presentation.
Councilmember Stigler.
I apologize. I had one more. Obviously I'm intrigued with the Dobson site because it's land we own. I've been up there. I've seen where it is right now, but the facility that's being used right now. How big is that? Is that about an acre or?
About an acre.
Yeah. Yeah. So we would need like five times the area that you have right now.
Yes.
Which would be quite encroachable down onto the DRCC. The other question was the other property that has been knocked around and nobody really likes it is the Cook property. I think that's the name of the one across the street with the big hole. Have you, have you looked at that? Is that just not going to work? It's not, you can't use it as a, as a site. Cause it's not really a good site for developing anything else. So.
It, it did not, when, when we did our filtering process, it did not, you know, meet that criteria. So we were looking at long term, so not about, you know, just the next, not just now, but next twenty years, but even beyond. So.
So it's too small.
It's too small.
It's too small. Cook is too small.
Yes.
Make the needs today, but never in the future.
So, so Cook was looked at a number of years ago for just a building and it wasn't even big enough for a building. So it didn't have a yard space. It's less than an acre. Remember the wetland and the buffers.
Right, all the way around. Yeah.
Really not much space there.
How much room do we need to store materials?
Pardon?
How much room do we need to store materials?
Well, I think that's what's going on at Dobson now is, you know, if there's a street light pole that's laid down or some concrete or some asphalt we've dug up, but we're storing it until we get enough to get, go take it somewhere else. That's where there's about an acre, probably less than an acre, but most of an acre up there is being used because we got the space. Cause we only have a little bit of space here.
Right, but could Cook be used for that? I mean, I know it's not ideal to split it up, but where you have Cook across the street from Dobson, is, is that option of using Cook for restoring the materials and?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be feasible. I can see that you got right across the street. You just don't want to have your storage yard. We don't look at.
Yeah, you don't have to drive away.
City, you don't want to do that. You want it right there, right there where you could do that kind of thing.
So when you're looking at Dobson, you're, you are looking at the Cook property of whether it could be part of that?
I think we've used Dobson as a shorthand for something and because it's what we're using at now, something up there would work. Keegan, maybe you want to, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I think storage wise right now, we don't, we don't currently have enough room. I think if it was across the street, it wouldn't be such a big deal. So like currently if we're picking up materials and gravel, things like that, we're going to get it day of. Which is, you know, it's, it's not a standard process. Usually you store materials so that we have them on site. We just don't have room to do that. We use the Dobson property currently to store sand and salt and we do some dumping and things up there. It's not all the space that we would need. We need a lot more space because we should be storing gravel. We should be storing, you know, have storage bins for asphalt, concrete, should be taking them and disposing of them when we have full truckloads versus one at a time. So it would work if we were to split them. It's just being like close by would be, would be the thing to do.
Yeah. Councilmember Duque.
Thank you so much for coming and for this presentation. I found it everything my fellow council members have asked or questions or were things I had listed. But what came to me right now as we were talking about the Cook property is in part of your looking at things, what about proximity to homes? Is that just, and I, I think of it because if we're talking about Cook, there are homes right are close enough, right? There's also the apartments, Pacific Topsoil's that area over there, while across there is now homes right next to that existing site. And quite a bit of traffic already on thirty fifth. So I was in terms of where people live, how does that come into play when you're reviewing things?
We, we definitely, so one of our points was we looked at residential properties, whether it's next to it, if it was, then it we would, that is not a great candidate for public works because operationally, there's a lot of noise that a public works operation would create. So it's not desirable. So that's why we stayed away from that. So definitely that was one of the criteria when we started filtering some of the sites.
Okay. So then these ones already have, Tate, the ones that you flagged today have already taken to, into account that. So there might've been other larger site parcels in the area, but if they're too close to something like that, you've already taken to, thank you very much. I assume so, but I just wanted to make sure. Resident herds, because I could, I could see how someone living in any of, like someone could see this map and go, I'm right there. And have very much concerns about what it might look like, especially if you look at the presentation and see something like. I can't remember if it was Samamish or Issaquah, but had like, or maybe it was Kirkland that had a much larger facility and then thinking about having that, you know, as part of my view, you know? So I could, I could just consider it. So I wanted to make sure that was flagged. Thank you.
Other questions?
Last comment?
Yeah.
I, I just like to say, I, I do like the idea of considering, maybe the next time you come back, let us know what you could look at a Dobson Cook combination. Because if it would work, I like the fact that we own it. Then we could start moving ahead with it. We could start planning for it. We could, you know, that, that part is because other pieces of land, we're getting competitive with other people and it could really delay the process. So if that's possible, if it's not, then okay. Pass, but I, I do like that suggestion a lot. Combination.
Thank you again for the presentation. We look forward to part three in a couple, a month, six months, or six weeks? What are, what's the timing again on part three?
Probably September after you guys come back from break.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have no old business on our agenda, so we're jumping back to the new business. Item E, resolution related to comprehensive safety action plan consultant agreement and ordinance related to amending the twenty twenty five, twenty six biennial budget and twenty five, twenty twenty five, twenty thirty capital improvement plan. Mr. Bean, again.
Thank you again for this opportunity for the fourth out of seven times to talk to you about this program. I'm following up from last week when Alta engine, Alta Planning and Engineering came in and provided the safety action plan that described and identified different packages that we could move forward with for a demonstration and implementation grant. This discussion today is to talk about allowing that to happen. The grant is due June twenty sixth, which is a Thursday. We would be asking that Alta have their final word to us on the twenty third. So it's a pretty fast turnaround. They're going to prepare conceptual design plans and budgets for the, the construction effort, design and construction effort, but then also put together narratives and budgets and schedules that go along with the other demonstrative items, such as the enforcement education, the safe routes to school, the lighting inventory. So it's a lot of, a lot of effort just to get this done in five weeks. So, and then they'll submit it to us on the twenty third. We make some final revisions to make sure that it's good enough to submit, hopefully a day early, the twenty fifth of July, June, sorry. The total effort to do this work is forty one thousand six, four hundred and sixty dollars. So our budget right now for twenty five, twenty six needs to be amended by forty thousand, an increase of forty thousand dollars to balance, balance things out. And we do have sufficient funding for that. The twenty twenty five to twenty thirty capital improvement plan needs to be amended to reflect that forty thousand dollar increase. So project ST zero 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 three will increase from two hundred and forty to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Before we talk about this, do you have any questions?
So is this implementing the Safe Streets program that we heard last week?
Yes.
So is this money going to come out of the Safe Streets grant or is this money from a different source?
No, this, this money is ahead of that grant and probably not eligible for reimbursement.
Okay.
I'll add to that. So remember we've got money from the feds for the study. That twenty percent, our own twenty percent match went to Alta for the work we've already done. Now we're asking for additional money for them to take us to the next step for the planning and demonstration grants. So this is an investment in a lot of money for some projects, whether we talked about last week, thirty fifth Mill Creek Boulevard and the ones that Robert listed as other programs too.
Okay, Councilmember Stigler.
Just to clarify to the slide before this one, you, you show two forty thousand dollar amendments, but the total net increase is just forty nine, eighty thousand. It's.
Correct.
Correct.
The request is for forty thousand, but it needs to be reflected in two areas.
In both areas. Okay. Okay. So it's really. Okay, one, one move in two budgets. Okay. And that explains the, the funding, the question I had about the Fed money. And then what about, are we use, I see we have sufficient funds, but we also have our, our, or formerly known as our RP, RPB funds. Would we not want to consider using those for this forty thousand rather than our own cash reserves? Just a question.
No, we would, we would recommend using the road improvement fund for this one.
And why is that?
Because the road improvement fund is a capital projects fund and that money is consisted with this specific work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Instead of using the RPB fund, which is a general fund, and I think we'd want to save general fund for other.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
Councilmember Duque.
My question is, was this, why was this not anticipated? When doing the initial contract with them? If we knew that we were going to have to get them to work on getting us ready for the grant, right? Like this step, why was that not already included?
Right. When I first came to talk to you about this, we talked about the different stages of grant. And we went with writing out the action plan. And while we were writing that out, the federal government was kind of shifting around the dates when they were going to call for the grants. And so as that shifted and acceptable language was shifted, we learned in March that everything was due on the twenty sixth, which spurred us on to just try to move forward with Alta since they already had the momentum with that.
Thank you. That very helpful.
You were planning on a later date originally, not the twenty sixth. Okay.
Other questions? Stephanie, did you have any questions? Can't see you on the screen.
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions. One. So we're needing to spend forty one thousand four sixty to apply, to finish up what we need to apply for the grants. How much money in grants are we applying for?
We don't have that exact number yet. As they put together their ten to fifteen percent design plans and cost estimates, we'll get a better idea of what that is as well as the money to do the studies.
Okay. And so we're talking about. I guess I'm slightly confused or I mean, cause you're talking about taking it from a specific fund, but yet we're increasing how much we're spending in that fund. Is there not something that we could not, that we could adjust? Our spending on in that fund?
So if, if, is, is the question, Mayor Protam, why we're using Fund three, one, eight? Is that, is that your question?
Um. Well, not necessarily. My question is, if we're gonna, you're saying that's where we need to use the money. And so that's increasing the fund. Is there not something in, that we had budgeted in that fund that we could put off or shuffle around so that we did not have to increase that fund for forty thousand dollars?
Um, so yes, we. So, so for the twenty five, twenty six budget, we already appropriated or budgeted about, I want to say maybe two million of three, one, eight funds, road and improvement fund for the capital projects that have been established or have been adopted by council. So there is sufficient surplus in three, one, eight to add to this project. So there's no need for us in, as far as finance is concerned, there's no need for us to recommend to use alternative funding.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to respond to Mayor Protam's first question regarding the amount that we may be going for. While we don't know the actual total amount, we are anticipating something in the millions.
Perfect. Thank you.
Nice round number.
Maybe, maybe I can add to this. So here's what's going on. There's a lot of, so remember we've, we've made a commitment, you've made a commitment. Maybe, maybe I can add to this. So here's what's going on. There's a lot of, so remember we've, we've made a commitment, you've made a commitment to safety. Zero injuries, zero deaths, and Thirty-Fifth, for example, is a place where we've suffered two fatalities over the last couple of years. So Alta came back and pointed out the high injury network and said, we recommend projects on Thirty-Fifth. We have projects in our capital plan for Thirty-Fifth called a cr, a crossing or two. But we've recognized that if we can get some federal money, maybe it's not just a crossing with an R F B for a couple hundred thousand bucks. It might be a million dollars to put in a roundabout. That's what they talked about last week. Maybe roundabout, that's not the right idea. Maybe it's a road diet, maybe it's medians, maybe it's something else. We don't know that yet. So we're spending some money with them to come back and say, you can just put in a median and R R F B for a couple hundred thousand bucks, or you can put in a, uh, roundabout for two million bucks. What do you guys want to do? And if we get that money, then the whole capital plan changes that we're not going to do a hundred or two hundred, whatever was in there for the Thirty-Fifth Crossing. We're not going to do that. Instead, we're going to have a million dollars from the feds that will match with twenty percent. And then we'll end up with a more extensive project that we believe is going to be safer for the community overall. So that's, it's kind of up in the air. It's, it's a, if we get the money, we got an opportunity to do some things that we think are important for safety overall. So that's why it's a little bit fuzzy, but really we think it's worth spending forty thousand dollars to get enough detail to be able to go and have a really good application and get money for projects that we think our community needs, but weren't in our capital plan. So it, it's not a shell game, but it's kind of, that's why we're kind of leveraging this, this opportunity, but and it does require a twenty percent match, but we think twenty percent of a million dollars is worth going for. That's kind of what this is about. Does that make more sense?
Seems like a good investment to me. Spend twenty thousand dollars in capital funds. And either way, we're going to get some, a grant and way in addition of that twenty thousand dollars, which is going to allow us to do better uh, uh, Safe Street projects. So yeah, makes a lot of sense.
And so if I'm under, just listen to me, help me make sure I'm understanding um what we're saying. So what we're saying is, Armina, that we have the forty thousand in surplus, right? Is that what we're saying? So then basically the money is there in the surplus. And we're just making this adjustment because we need to put down line items in the budget that we allocated that money out of the surplus.
That is correct, Mayor Protam.
Perfect, thank you.
Other questions?
I'd be willing to make the motion.
Please.
Uh, Lee, if you could bring me back the motion on the screen. I appreciate it. I, I propose to move to adopt a resolution directing the city manager to sign a contract amendment with Alta Planning and Design Incorporated not to exceed forty-one thousand four hundred sixty dollars and no cents.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes six, zero. Thank you. Oh, two motions. Motion one has passed. So that amended the budget. Now we need to amend the CFP.
Understood. Uh, our second motion, uh, move to adopt an ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six biennium budget and the twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty capital improvement plan to provide sufficient funding for the remainder of the Safety Action Plan project.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion number two passes six, zero. Thank you. Okay, now our other study session. Item H, Snohomish County Master Annexation Interlocal Agreement Template Review. Mr. Ryan?
Uh, good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. Um, excited to see you all again. Uh, so today we're going to be talking about the master annexation interlocal agreement. Um, the goal of this today is not to scare you all. Uh, the goal of this is just to introduce you to the idea of a master annexation I O A. It's not commitment, it's not a, anything like that. This is just, what the heck is this thing? What is this about? And if y'all are interested, I'll be happy to bring back more information to you. This is purely just kind of a one-on-one on what is the master annexation I O A. So if I can advance the keyword. So what is a master I O A? Um, so the master annexation I O A is a long-term agreement between City Mill Creek against Snohomish County. Um, it sets rules for potential future growth uh, uh, annexation within the city's municipal urban growth area or M O G A as, as unappetizingly called. Um, and it ensures, what, the purpose of this is to ensure a smooth transfer of services and responsibilities. Again, this ain't commitment to annexation. This is just a rules of the road for if we are, if, if we were to do it, this is how we're going to do it. Um. So the purpose of the agreement, like I said, is to provide a coordinated urban growth and development. Um, and really the main kind of point of this is to make sure that there are consistent standards um, in place for, in planning before and after the annexation. Just to make sure we don't have any confusing situations and projects that were approved under one authority but are pending another one. And also it's to promote cooperation on transportation capital products and things. This is about um, greasing the skids, so to speak, to make sure that if we were to grow and to expand that we've kind of already considered all the nuts and bolts and we've already kind of figured out on who's going to do what. Um, so like I said, it covers annexations within the, the M O G A and ensures, ensures shared planning and policy alignment between the city and county. It also allows for amendments to address some area-specific areas. So what is this process? Step one is we negotiate the I O A. Um, we, you know, we'll have to agree on annexation terms, plan serving uh roads, revenue, all that kind of stuff. Then we'll have to adopt, we'll have to both formally adopt the I O A, then we'll have to submit it to the boundary review board. Um, we're, for when we're ready to make that, when we're ready to pull the figure on annexation, we just uh initiate the I O As to kind of move forward with that. Why this matters? Again, this is about not commitment. I don't know if I've emphasized that enough. Um, it ensures a predictable, consistent process and that um, we are protecting service quality and local control as we expand. And we're also promoting collaboration, reducing legal playing disputes. So um, on the agenda packet, you will see a draft of, just like a template of the agreement. Um, it's, we've already kind of just put in some of the Mill Creek names and some of the placeholder stuff. It's super basic for what it is now. But what it does cover is, covers pretty much all different aspects of a potential annexation. It covers uh, planning and development. Um, as proposed by the county, um, the city adopts extent land use standards that meet state growth targets. What this means is if they adopt whatever zoning standards are in place or at the time that we zone, that we annex, we roll with those zoning categories. So if they adopt a new category, for example, they're debating a, a white rail community zoning designation that has some different densities, they're talking about regional growth centers. All these kind of land use considerations that are in place at the time of annexation, we have to make sure that our, we're taking those standards in there. Um, this also um, does support joint planning for roads, housing, and infrastructure. This, whether this works is that we would start participating in a development application in our M O G A. We would have um, a little more voice and a little more um, input in terms of development standards, especially something that is in our growth area. Um, and then also, it does also provide some transitional rules that allow the county to finish reviewing pending permits and stuff like that. Uh, it also does cover transportation. Um, the city would take over road and maintenance after annexation. Um, this would's um, just help us negotiate and determine shared impact fees and planning for traffic solutions and allow the county to retain um, certain roadways if agreed upon. Um, we'll go into this later with parks, but for example, some parks, the county might just be like, hey, we actually spent a lot of money and love on this. We kind of would like to keep this. We might just be like, yeah, okay, keep it. We don't want it. Of course, we want all the parks. We love our parks. Um, so service water and stormwater, same thing. The city would inherit a lot of stormwater systems with annexed areas. We'd have to set up agreements between data sharing, access, um, different N D P, uh, N P D E S uh, permit responsibilities as well as um, just kind of suss out the details in particulars with the transition. Uh, parks and open space, this is where I was saying that there might be some parks in open space that we would take over, some, the county might say, no, we want to keep this spot. Um, there's also, we have to exist, we would have to honor existing third-party agreements and um, and then also, you know, we would be encouraged to join, uh, do some long-term joint planning for some recreational areas. Police, fire, and criminal justice issues. Um, city would take over police and fire marshal services upon annexation. Um, county would finish processing criminal cases filed prior to, and then um, parties may uh, contract for additional transitional support. Enforcement, same thing as I've been saying everything else. Basically, city would take over a lot of certain responsibilities. The county would retain responsibility for stuff done for annexation. And we would have to knock out the particulars for um, for support after that. Um, we would also have to agree on uh, for financial and capital project transition. City and county must agree on cost sharing for capital projects. Um, county be reimbursed for unfinished projects if agreed in advance. Uh, no double payment for citizens, uh, if someone has expecting some kind of um, prior tax. Um, you know, I think, yeah, sorry. So that one's like, um, you can't be assessed twice for the same property tax or something like that. Um, and then um, it doesn't flexibilities. We are allowed to make additional adjustments uh, allowed for tailored annexation process. For example, annexing out west uh, to I five might be a very different annexation process than going east towards the power lines. Um, very different areas, very different vibes, we're vibes people. So we, uh, it allows for us to make adjustments and modify our I O As tailored to the specific areas. Um, and then, of course, there's extension possibilities. So that was my super six mile an hour drive by. This is what the master annexation I O A is about. Um, again, the thing that I kind of want to reiterate here is um, I'm very happy to do a very, a more in-depth detailed analysis of this master annexation I O A, but what the pros and cons are, if it's good or bad. I thought that would be premature at this stage, um, because this is all kind of new and we're just kind of dipping our toes in the water. And that kind of felt like um, diving headfirst in. So I thought, eh, let's just introduce the concept of the master annexation I O A. This is one of many I O A, uh, my, one of the many annexation strategies available. This has also been news. It was it was allowed in two thousand twenty. So it's new. Um, it's been done in some other cities. I believe Lake Stevens has done it a couple of times in some other areas. Um, but there, you know, are definitely other annexation options available um, that are available to us. This is just simply the beginning.
Councilmember Allison?
Yeah, my question was, would it, yeah, I don't understand what the benefit would be. You know, we don't have a decision yet, right? Um, but understanding the, the benefits to having such an I O A in place, even if we decided not to annex, you know, to be involved in the planning of an area that could one day become part of the city seems like a prudent thing to do to me, but I don't understand you know, what the pros and the cons are. So exactly what you said, you know, that might be the next analysis we would want to have done.
Councilmember Stekler?
I can have the same question. We, if we do a, a master annexation agreement, we kind of take into account everything, but we don't really know the specifics of anything because we don't have a specific area. So wouldn't it make more sense to wait until we've made that decision to go west, to go east, to go north, or south, whatever, go south? And say, okay, now here are the situations that we're going to face with the county. Wouldn't, are we, wouldn't it be better to take that time then? Because I think we do it first for ma, master annexation. Then we have to do it again when we get into a specific area and there's, you know, like you said, a great one is these permits and things that are in process. We're both going to be fighting for those. So that's going to be a, a very specific discussion. What, what exactly do we save or how do we benefit from having the master annexation versus wait until we have a specific?
Right. So the question is, is why, why do the big, big general one?
Yeah, what do we get for that?
We're just going to have to go through a similar process every time we go a small one. Well, the idea is that instead of having to negotiate every little fine eye detail, every single time you do it, you knock out the big stuff with the big brush and then when you're ready to commit to a specific area, the amount of stuff you have to dicker on is a much smaller. So it expedites, it expedites the annexation process. But, and then the other real advantage of this is um, there's no petition. There's no going out to voters, there's no sending out mailers and getting anyone like that. It's just we agree with Snohomish County and, and we go through the boundary review. Like, pretty much we go through the process and it eliminates the whole um, direct petition process.
So we don't have to do a direct petition if we have agreement with the county?
Yeah.
Oh.
You can, it's an annexation via I O A. So that means that you eliminate a lot of these typically burdensome and expensive processes that appear in directly households and stuff like that. That's all gone. This, that's, that's the real advantage of doing the master annexation I O A is that um, allows you to basically exp, um, in some ways it um, it can expedite or it can make it easier to do annexations by eliminating the whole petition process or other alternate annexation methods.
Does it get us out of the B R B process? Doesn't the B R B still have jurisdiction to review the ultimate boundary?
I believe the B R B is still involved in the process. Um, so you, you can't do an I O A and still have, you know, make it look like an alligator tooth.
Right.
Alligator mouth.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had a question, Jeff. If we enter into an I O A like this, does this help bring us to, to the table when they are looking at making any changes so that we could be part of any discussions? If they are making any zoning changes or any design changes or anything in areas that we could end up annexing in the future possibly?
Correct. This would elevate our opportunity to kind of voice our opinions and provide feedback on development applications and zoning decisions and other things like that. There's already some coordination that does occur at the S E T level and for like development pre-applications where the city has been invited to attend these meetings. Um, but you know, I think by entering this, we would kind of go from maybe just some, you know, rascal in the peanut gallery to be, maybe having more of a, a voice in, in these projects or in these deliberations.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
But I think we need to keep in mind, the county just finished their ten-year comp plan update and re-designated most of that area to medium density. So I don't see them changing the zoning anytime soon from what they processed they just went through. The issue is really the design review, because that's always the rub with these annexations, is the county wants us to annex. We want them to apply our design standards, but they don't want to apply our design standards so they know we're going to annex. Um, I don't know if there's a way to address that through here. Um, but that's, you know, it's not the zoning that I'm concerned about. It's what the development looks like that's built under the county zoning, county zoning before we get around to actually annexing. It, it could, yeah. Whether they'll agree to it is a, is a whole nother matter. But the, the two other comments I had is, the exec's office has told me that they're not wedded to McCullum Park and Martha Lake Airport Park. So if we were to annex, at least the current executive doesn't have, other than the farm to the table portion of the McCullum Park, that, that's what they are wedded to, but the rest of it, they're not. Um, I think the other comment that we'd have to keep in mind with this is stormwater. Remember, ten years ago, we got scared off because at the time we were looking to going down to the casino on One Eightieth was right when Mr. One of Mr. Carmody's predecessors was spending hours looking at tape of the filming in the pipes and discovering the, what lies beneath. And we're talking about annexing a lot of areas in the county that were developed at similar times. So I don't know if there's a way to negotiate something in there that if we add, decide to annex and then we find out we've didn't find a pot of gold underneath the ground. Um, Director Todd?
I was just, you know, I remember those discussions and it was scary, but I'm thinking now that they're a phase one permittee. So they're like five years ahead of us in terms of N P D requirements. And in all frankness, they are probably more caught up on deferred maintenance in a lot of ways than we are. They might not be, but that's it's something, I, I think it's a good thing to look at.
Yeah.
But you're right, it's developed at the same time. They might have the same, same C M P issues we do, but I would say probably at least two years ago, they were doing a better job of looking to catch basins and repair them than we were. So it might not be as bad as we think it is, but that is one of the big things I think we should look at.
Yeah. And to me, this is just laying out the rules of the game. So if we do decide to annex, we've got a lot of that taken a, uh, taken care of ahead of time rather than having to do it at the, when we decide to move or if we decide to move. Councilmember Allison?
Yeah, I guess, you know, being able to enter into an agreement and get the data sharing, so our eyes are wide open without having to go through a big study to get it. Seems like that would be a benefit to having a interlocal agreement.
Okay, other questions? Anything else for us on this?
Um, I think that's everything to, you know, if I believe.
It's not an action item, it's a study session.
Nope, there's not a next steps. Yep, so that's it. Thank you all. And um, yeah, we'll talk about this later.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda this evening. Item I, approval of checks number six-eight-seven-seven-two through six-eight-eight-zero-nine and A C H wire transfers in the amount of two hundred twenty-eight thousand eight hundred eighty-nine forty-two. and A C H wire transfers in the amount of two hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-nine, forty-two cents. The audit committee was Councilmember Steckler and Paddock. Were there any exceptions?
No exceptions.
And item J, payroll and benefit A C H payments in the amount of six hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. Any exceptions?
No exceptions.
Can you sing it next time? City Council meeting minutes of April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve. One second.
Alls in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved, six, zero. Reports, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just got uh, three quick reports. Just some scheduling events coming up. Tomorrow, City Chat, Open House, six P M, City Hall North. Uh, next week, I think it's Wednesday, the twenty-first, uh, we got eleven thirty uh, State of the City address in the forum, I think it's called, uh, in Town Center North. And the last is uh, the Memorial, the Memorial Day Ceremony on May twenty-sixth, May twenty-sixth. That's a Monday. I believe that's nine A M. in the morning, so. Another report from staff. Mayor, thanks.
Well, you covered my reports. I got City Chat tomorrow night, State of the City next week, P S R C General Assembly the day after Memorial Day, and there's something else on here. Um, I think that's it. So I didn't have anything else. Mayor Protem?
Sorry, the mute button doesn't pop up easily for me. I had all those things for my, that you had just mentioned, um, as events that we were coming to. And also just let everyone know that I, we had um, our latest meeting of the Exploratory Committee for S C T today. And we are getting more information to come back to us on focusing on areas of, of course, housing. Um, was our top concern, economic development is going to be our, is our second top concern. And we're going to have someone from econ, from E A S C coming and speaking with us next, at our next meeting. And then um, we're going to cover transportation and looking at how to merge in some behavioral health and health and human services um, under S C T. So that's kind of where we are right now, and they're going to bring back more information for us on what structures should look like. And we'll be making those type of decisions to take to the formal committee um, in the upcoming months, just so you guys know where we're at on that. Thanks.
Councilmember Steckler, any report?
Just two items. One, um, I know we, uh, city manager, we've launched the new website. Could we get a walk-through that, uh, on, on one of our agendas coming up, uh, just take us through the changes and what, what's entailed in that? Okay. And then the other one to bring to everyone's attention, uh, I think most people here may be aware of this. And it's not a big issue to our city now, but talking about annexation, everything, it's going to get bigger and bigger. Uh, the county recently passed a uh, a nuisance R V um, uh, uh, legislation, um, allowing them to uh, um, impound um, uh, in, uh, stationary R Vs after, I think it was seventy-two hours. And I was thinking, uh, might be a good opportunity for us to look at possibly adding that to our regulations as well. Just, I know we've had a couple of small instances with um, with R V, nuisance R Vs, especially in the library and uh, that I've heard of in one other area. Just something that we might want to consider passing now and um, getting it just on the books so we can help prevent that from becoming an issue. That's it.
Councilmember Allison?
No report.
Councilmember Duque?
There were, um, uh, there was a park and recreation board meeting last Wednesday, and I wanted to um, give a big thank you to Community Development and Planning Director Jeff Ryan, uh, for his uh, presentation um, to the Parks Board. I know they all really appreciated it. And then we had, I know we briefly, we may have briefly touched on it, but we also had a joint meeting with um, the Arts and Beautification Board um, to talk about uh, the library park drainage study. And uh, it's really great to participate in these meetings with our residents to that, you know, their, the questions they ask are, it's, it obviously, just like all of us, they're very engaged in their city and want the best for the city. And so it's a, a wonderful opportunity. So I, uh, as someone who used to be on the Parks Board just um, as a resident, I really appreciate the time and effort staff, both who put it on together. We were reviewing bylaws for it. Um, but also just the presentations and the importance it shows, that they're not just some group that meets on Wednesdays of every month, but instead their opinions are valued, um, and that they work. And also, we got to meet at the last meeting, our new Mick Yab um, representative, and we got to say goodbye to our, um, the one that we've had for the last year. So I, I just really appreciate how we um, continue to um, hear from our residents. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Paddock?
A couple of things. Um, on the new website, wow, that thing is really fantastic. Um, I had to look for some permit stuff and was loathe to have to call Director Todd again for where I would find that, and the website is awesome. I might suggest taking a look at the website prior to a council meeting and see what you think before maybe having us all go through it. Yeah, maybe this. Um, second, I brought up uh, Girls on the Run, June eighth. Uh, and all folks are invited, electeds and, and non. Um, we also need, or they also need volunteers. So if anyone's looking for volunteer hours that are sitting in the front row, or anybody who's doing volunteering back there, that's on June eighth. Uh, and they are looking for volunteers. And it, and it's just, it's a fantastic event and, and opportunity. Um, lastly, I, I still think, or I think the fifteenth is still the planning commission deadline for uh, for folks to turn in their applications. Is that right? Fifteenth? And there were three open slots, so you got a couple of days left if you're interested in doing that.
Yes, chances are we will be extending out the recruitment period, um, just as an F Y I.
Thank you. Okay. Brings us to audience communication. One more bite at the apple, seeing not a head negative in chambers, and I don't see anyone online. We have no executive session this evening. We have nothing further on our agenda, so I'll adjourn the meeting at seven seventeen P M.
Good night, everybody. I guess it's good that I didn't pay for a sitter till nine thirty since they didn't show up, huh?